Video, please.
There we go. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of June 5, 2025. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2025 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning Zone Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mayor Tricorelli, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Vitale are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Flag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Committeeman Leponti?
Present.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Here.
Chair Siraji?
Here.
Mr. Hoise?
Present.
Ball?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everybody. First up, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration and a phone call.
I'm not here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the February 13, 2025, meeting minutes?
The eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Leponti, and the Chair.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussions from today's hearing now and roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Chair Siraji?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion to approve the April 3, 2025, meeting minutes? Eligible members?
Eligible members are Mr. Flag, Mr. Radowitz, Ms. Smith, Mr. Depp, Committeeman Leponti, and the Chair.
Okay. Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Chair Siraji?
Yes. We do not have any resolutions for consideration, no planning board business, and no ordinances for consideration, so I will move to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to provide any comments to the board, please feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of June 5, 2025. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2025 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning Zone Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mayor Tricorelli, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Vitale are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Flag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Committeeman Leponti?
Present.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Here.
Chair Siraji?
Here.
Mr. Hoise?
Present.
Paul?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everybody. First up, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration and a phone call.
I'm not here.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the February 13, 2025, meeting minutes?
The eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Leponti, and the Chair.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussions from today's hearing now and roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Chair Siraji?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion to approve the April 3, 2025, meeting minutes? Eligible members?
Eligible members are Mr. Flag, Mr. Radowitz, Ms. Smith, Mr. Depp, Committeeman Leponti, and the Chair.
Okay.
Backing.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Chair Siraji?
Yes. We do not have any resolutions for consideration, no planning board business, and no ordinances for consideration, so I will move to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to provide any comments to the board, please feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Okay.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. I have a question in regard to when an application is submitted to the Planning Board. Who in the Planning Department has the responsibility of looking over whether the applicant is in the right zone in accordance with the, when he submits the application? If what he's presenting is in the right zone? Or if something is in a residential area, can they put something in that's not residential? Can that come before the board? Does that have to be checked out prior to make sure that everything is in order so that then the board can look at the application?
This is in regards when an application is received?
When an application is received by the Planning Department.
Part of the protocol is through completeness is something that we would be looking at for Planning Board matters. It'd be myself and my assistant planner, Ms. Ball. When it comes to, say, the Board of Adjustment, Ms. McLaughlin would be looking at it at that time during completeness.
Okay, I'm saying specifically like to the Planning Board, not to the Board of Adjustment.
Right.
If a property is in a, let's say, residential zone, can an applicant submit something for an industrial property? Or would that come before the board and then request waivers? Or is that handled prior to that in the Planning Department itself?
So the Planning Board is the Board of Permitted Uses, so the Planning Board can only hear applications with uses that are permitted. The zoning Board of Adjustment is the Board of Non-Permitted Uses, so if a proposed use requires a deuse variance, only the Board of Adjustment has jurisdiction to do that.
Okay. And some applications that have come before this board have had some ambiguity. There was one recent application that the applicant submitted records where the building was sitting on an easement that was not owned by that property owner. Was that permitted to come through, or should that have gone to the Board of Adjustment?
That was a decision rendered by the previous planning director as part of the completeness application. What came out of it afterwards became a whole other issue.
So the prior planning director?
Determined it to be complete as presented.
Okay. Okay. And as that application went forward, there were instances where it was?
Ms. Janusik, I'm going to indicate to you the matter is in litigation and the board is not able to comment any further.
The matter is in litigation, and the litigation has not, the attorney that submitted that did not provide all of the proper information because there were people at those meetings. I was there, there were other people who are here that were at that meeting, and what is presented to the court is not accurate because that application should have been looked at by the township governing body, the Township Committee, because that easement was owned by the township, and that should have been handled way before it went through the entire process of going before the Planning Board, and that application was denied, and now the applicant is looking to appeal that denial. That should have been handled way before. It was a big expense to residents of the Hearthstone 55 and Over Development. It should have been handled way before it went to the point that it got to, and what's in the courts now is not accurate, and that should be looked at very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment to the board on matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to our first public hearing. This is Campus Associates. Come on up. LLC, file 20-PB-13-MSPV is the 2025 update. So the last status update we had was, to the board, was of December 5 of last year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Would you like me to give a general update?
I'm happy to do that.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need to know who you are.
Sure, sure. My name is Steve Kessler. I am the General Counsel of Fernmore Living, Fernmore Properties, as it's known, and one of our LLC subsidiaries is the owner of the 5 Campus Drive property in Hillsborough. So between the last time I was here and the time I'm here currently, I'm happy to report that all clearing and grading has been completed. All of our site work, including infrastructure, pipes, stormwater systems, sewer, water, and curbing have been completed. At this point, all the infrastructure is installed and functioning. The next steps for us will be the electric layout and followed by the crossings and the permanent paving. We're currently in for permits, which are pending with the township. We're working through some issues. There were some issues with changes that we have to make to some of the plans and make some things complete, which we're working through right now. Those are permits for our clubhouse and our buildings. We're going to start with our foundation permits. We expect to have those relatively soon. Once we have those permits, we will begin our foundation work. The foundations for the buildings will take, you know, in the six to nine month range is a pretty good estimate for us. Once the foundations are complete, we move forward to the full, you know, building process, the vertical building process. We'll start that right away. We'll do one building at a time. Our plan is to have about a one-month gap between the completion of each of the buildings. And that's basically where we stand today. Like I said, we're working with the township right now in terms of cleaning up some of the application materials for our permits, and we've hopefully had relatively good relations with our neighbors. We've reached out and been in touch with the temple, which is located next door, and we've had some good contact with executives from the temple, and we look forward to completing the project in a timely manner and working with the town to get it done the right way.
Thank you.
On our end, permits are being reviewed, just making sure all of the paperwork is in order because it's a different ownership group. There's a little bit of going through some of the paperwork and making sure we're on the same page in terms of making sure that the phasing schedule, especially as it's inclusionary, that we're on the same page with that. I believe zoning permits will be issued very shortly, and they're actively meeting with the Building Department and all the other agencies as they go.
Mr. Mayhew, anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Board members?
Because it seems like years ago. Was it three buildings that you're building plus the clubhouse?
It's four buildings, actually.
Four buildings, yes. And is your intention to occupy each building as it's completed, or is it to wait till it's completed total?
We usually, the way we usually do it is as each building is completed, because we have about a one-month gap between them, we'll start leasing them up one at a time. So we'll go to seek, when the time comes, at least a temporary CO to get people in. There probably will be site things that have to be completed, landscaping, things like that, but we usually like to work through, you know, on the larger developments, like if we're developing eight buildings or nine buildings, we always do that. Here, it's a smaller project for the projects that we do, but my anticipation is that we're probably going to begin leasing as each building goes up.
And is the clubhouse going to be completed in the beginning, middle, or end?
Yeah, our plan is to get the clubhouse completed in the beginning as the first building is going up to start putting up the clubhouse because just from a leasing standpoint, tenants like to have their amenities in place and makes the leasing process a little easier.
I was going to say that would make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman? We have a specific phasing schedule, and there's a very specific order that they have to go in, not counting the clubhouse, in terms of the residential and which one. It's all based on how many affordable units are in each. There's a ratio, market rate to affordable. It's per ordinance in terms of which ones can get COs. So that's where we're working with them to be on the same page in the exact order it has to go.
And that's another thing I should mention. We're working through the deed, you know, getting the deed restrictions filed for the affordables with Mr. Bernstein's office currently as well, getting that finalized.
Do I need to open?
The rationale, as the board knows, for having this appearance was the rather lengthy lack of action being taken on the site and the prior owner's appearance here looking for an extinction. If the board wishes, the board can open it up to the public relative to any statements the council has made, and then it's up to the board whether they want another appearance at some point in the time, or you're all letting the process work its way through.
Okay. So may I have a motion to open the public?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to question the applicant's, now developers, attorney on any of his statements, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Grant Colmer, 144 Taylor. I didn't plan to speak. I'm sorry. But there was something about stormwater which was on my mind. Everything is in place for the stormwater, so you have connected into that 42-inch pipe?
At this point, what I'm told by our project managers that the stormwater system is functioning. It's obviously not complete. We don't have all the paving and the rest of the improvements complete, but the stormwater is in.
Okay. Okay, so no testing. Do you ever do testing to see like what is actual compared to what's real or what's posed?
I mean, I'd have to consult with our engineer on that.
Okay.
But I'm happy to do that.
Perhaps you can update the board when they come back about what?
I'm happy to do that, actually.
Proposed versus actual would be there.
That would be okay. Thank you.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey, also Hillsborough Township property owner. Can you elaborate a little bit on what's been done as far as this project right now? Is everything is only underground?
Yes, the underground improvements are completed. Obviously, connections have not been made to the sewer system or anything like that because we don't have foundations or buildings, but the stormwater infrastructure, the curbing, and some temporary paving have been installed at this point to protect everything that's been put underground.
Okay, I think there was something on the website that said that there were going to be some kind of project presentations today.
It's just an update.
Not as far as I'm aware, sorry.
It's just a verbal update.
So what has been done now is done in accordance with the settlement agreement?
Well, we came after all of that, so we stepped in after the settlement agreement, and we took over the project as approved. And at this point, we've been working really well with the township, with the township's Building Department, to move the project forward.
That settlement agreement, as you say, was with the prior owner. Was that settlement agreement legally transferred to the new owner?
I'm going to defer those questions to the board's counsel.
The answer is yes.
Predates my involvement.
Could you repeat that?
Yes.
Yes, why?
Yeah, the question was, have they been transferred to the new owner? And the answer is yes.
Was transferred legally to the owner?
They are part of the assumption that they, when they came in to take over the project, and it is my understanding they are following the conditions of the agreement and the approvals.
Okay. Why isn't that settlement agreement provided as part of these records? Because there are requirements within that settlement agreement that we should know what is required, and that hasn't been shown. Also, this application was initially denied, and the records that are shown with this?
Ms. Janusik, I think you're going beyond what we're allowing the public to do is ask the attorney questions on what he just provided, not a rehash of that application. If you need background information, I'm sure you can make an appointment with the Planning Department to review whatever documents you find are readily available.
Okay, so this application is being conducted in accordance with the application that had been submitted by Campus Associates LLC. Weiss?
We have an approved plan. Like I said, we purchased a property with an approved plan that was in place, and we are following all the requirements of that plan.
Okay, because this application doesn't give the specific site concerns, which are historic, environmental, and there are a lot of freshwater wetlands on this property. Has your, have you received permits from the environment, from the New Jersey Environmental Department in regard to these freshwater wetlands?
We are pursuing the construction of the project in accordance with all required laws, ordinances, and regulations.
Okay, so what are the requirements in regard to the fresh?
Ms. Janusik, you're going beyond. No. Ms. Janusik, you're going beyond. You're looking for process understanding? I suggest, again, make an appointment with the Planning Office.
We are being told that the underground work has been completed.
Right.
Stormwater work has been completed.
Right.
That should be part of the connection with the freshwater wetlands because there's very serious flooding issues on that property. So I'm asking if this is, these are requirements?
He answered it.
And if they have been?
They're connected. They're connected as far as they can with the stage of the project's at. I don't know what else you need.
I'm asking, what are the requirements in regard to the freshwater wetlands?
That's not his test. That's not his test.
The attorney is stating that they're complying with the requirements.
Ms. Janusik, do you have a question of what he just provided in his update statement?
Yeah, what are the requirements that were completed?
He didn't talk about requirements. He gave us an update on the status of the project. Do you have a question on that?
When I asked, he stated that they are complying with the requirements. So I'm asking, what are the requirements that they are complying with?
He's not here to be starting to answer those type of questions.
Why not?
Because he's not. That wasn't what the board asked.
He is here stating that the underground?
Ms. Janusik, do you have another question that is relevant? Otherwise, I would ask you to please sit down. We have a lot on the agenda tonight.
I know, I know. But this is also on the agenda, and it's very important because someone else had asked. There's a lot of issues.
And he got an answer. He was satisfied, and he made a suggestion for us.
And we're being told that certain things were done, so what was done?
Ms. Janusik? Question? Or please sit down.
Why?
Not of me, of the attorney of his statement.
Why is there no resolution regarding the initial denial of this application?
That has nothing to do with his?
Records have been provided on civil clerk.
All right, Ms. Janusik, I'm going to ask you to sit down. You have no relevant questions.
On civil clerk, and that resolution is not provided, and it should be. And also, the settlement agreement?
No, Ms. Janusik.
So that we know what is required of this applicant, and also a copy showing that?
Ms. Janusik, you're being disruptive right now. Do I need to bring an officer in at this point?
No, showing that the settlement agreement was legally transferred.
I have asked you.
Thank you.
Please sit down. Anyone else? I'm really nice. I'm not shy. Okay, may I have a motion to close? All favor?
Aye.
So, board members? Would we like an update?
Listen, I like to get out of work early, so I don't mind coming up here at all. So I'm happy to come back in six months.
December.
December would work. That's more than sufficient time to have the summer to continue the project and clear up.
And a festive time of the year, too, so we all should be in good mood, right?
Happy to do it.
All right, so do we need to make a motion for?
Motion to place this matter on the one of the December board meeting agendas for a further six-month update on the status of the project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Siraji?
Yes.
Thank you, folks.
Enjoy the summer.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the main event, Homestead Road LLC. I will invite representatives.
And Mr. Chairman, while?
Oh, yes.
Yes, while counsel is getting ready, I will continue my recusal on this matter. I will remain on the dais this evening to wait for the executive session.
Okay.
If I should get up and leave, nobody can follow me.
Okay. So Homestead Road LLC, file number 21-PB-25-MSPV. Time of decision, July 31 of this year, Block 200.10, Lots 32 and 33, otherwise known as 203 Homestead Road and 189 Homestead Road. The application is continued from our May 8, 2025, meeting without further notice, and I will ask the attorneys and objectors to please introduce themselves.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Genetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC. Mike Pissaro from the Watershed Institute, objector number one.
Scott Gross, local citizens against traffic. John Lanahan.
Lori Cleveland for the Sowerland Conservancy.
Brian Tarantino representing SWAT.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein, some housekeeping?
Before we get going, Mr. Chairman, I have a certification of absent board member examination of record eligibility to vote from Ms. Smith, who viewed the video recording of May 8, 2025. She is therefore eligible to participate. I will point out for the board, the eligible members are Ms. Smith, Mr. Wagner, Committeeman Leponti, Vice Chair Pezen, and yourself.
Thank you. And do we want to state about what time we're going to end because we have the executive session?
I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, for the executive session to start around 9 o'clock because it's going to take a little bit, so I would therefore suggest that we've got about an hour and 20, or at least tonight. We'll see where we go after that.
Okay. Thank you.
If you recall, Chairman, at a few meetings ago, we had the direct examination of the rebuttal testimony of our traffic engineer, who was cross-examined by the objectors and was in the middle of public questioning. He wasn't available at the last meeting, but we did actually begin public comment for those that wanted to have public comment, to get their one bite at the apple, and we have our traffic engineer this evening to continue with the public questioning of his testimony. his testimony from the March meeting, so unless there's any housekeeping matters, I'd like to call Gary Dean back up to the stand.
Okay. And we'll swear you back in.
Yes, I do.
Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N.
Okay, and I'm just gonna ask my general question, any changes in your credentials, suspensions, or gaps, or anything along those lines since the last time?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman, still current and in good standing.
Okay. Please continue.
I really don't have anything-
Okay.
-further examination, I think we're just asking more members of the public that wanna come up and question him about his testimony at the last meeting.
Do we have to formally reopen? Okay. I have a motion to open a public comment on Mr. Dean's most recent prior-
Yes, his rebuttal testimony only.
-testimony, his rebuttal testimony, yes.
So moved.
All favor? Aye. Okay. Any from the public that has not had the opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Dean on his rebuttal testimony, please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Anyone can come up, I don't-
I'm okay with that.
Does everyone remember who Mr. Dean is? I, I just gotta check, it's, yeah. This is your last chance. All right.
Thank you, as always, board members.
Well, thank you for coming back.
At this point, unless we have, I don't think we have any more witnesses, I think what we do, Mr. Chairman, is resume public comment on the overall application itself related to what has been presented to the board through the, what we are now engaged in our golden anniversary meeting.
All right. This means meeting 25, so. Okay, so, now I have to reopen, will we get a close, Mr. Dean, or we're just open, we're open, it's okay. So we are open for the public to continue putting on the record their thoughts about the application.
For those who have not spoken.
Yeah, for those who have not, at the May 8th meeting, so, please feel free to come up and state your name and address for the record, you don't need to wait for me to call you up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Taylor-
Ms. Todd, you can move the mic out of the, if you wish, or up.
How's that?
As you can get heard.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, my name is Patricia Taylor Todd, I am from Jackson Avenue in Montgomery. Thank you. I'm accustomed, as I am, to public speaking. I am here on behalf of the Montgomery Township Committee, Mayor Nina Singh, and the residents of Montgomery Township, to make a statement in opposition to this application, and I want to place this following statement on the record, I've given a copy to the assistant planner. Dear Hillsborough Township Planning Board, on behalf of the Montgomery Township Committee, we want to express our serious concerns regarding the proposed warehouse development at Homestead Road in Hillsborough Township, particularly with respect to the anticipated traffic impacts on New Jersey State Road 206 and surrounding local roads that traverse both of our municipalities. As neighboring communities, we share a significant portion of regional traffic burden, and we are especially concerned that the projected increase in truck and employee vehicle traffic generated by this warehouse could have adverse effects on roadway safety, congestion, and infrastructure wear in Montgomery Township. NJ Route 206 already operates under significant strain during peak hours, and the introduction of additional heavy truck volumes may exacerbate existing issues, including delays, noise, and potential hazards to local drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists. We respectfully urge Hillsborough Township to carefully consider the broader regional traffic implications during this review and approval process of this project. We also recommend the following: a comprehensive traffic impact study that includes intersections and road segments within Montgomery Township, particularly those along Route 206 and Feta Roads; coordination with NJ DOT to assess and mitigate potential effects on Route 206, including signal, timing, turn lanes, and truck routing; coordination with Somerset County to assess and mitigate potential effects on Route 601 and potentially other county roads, including signal, timing, turn lanes, and truck routing; consideration of truck access limitations or route restrictions to minimize disruption to residential and school areas; and ongoing communication and coordination with Montgomery Township throughout the planning and permitting phases. Montgomery Township is committed to working collaboratively with Hillsborough Township and other stakeholders to ensure responsible development that considers the health, safety, and quality of life for all area residents. We will welcome the opportunity to meet and discuss this matter further at your convenience. Signed, Mayor Nina Singh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough.
Mr. Martin, I'm going from memory, so I apologize. It was your wife, but not you this time, so it's your turn?
It's my turn.
You have the list? All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, the 2010 Master Plan Amendment that created this transitional zone states, quote, "Therefore, it is recommended that a new land use slash zone designation should be considered, which would serve as a transition between the existing nearby residential development and the more intense development permitted in the LI district to the west." Dr. Sirici, a member of the planning board at the time, said, quote, "The word 'transition' is not to mean a transition of time, it is meant to indicate a transition of intensity between residential and industrial." When I questioned the applicant's planner, she actually responded, quote, "Well, I don't know that we can compare the use of this property and say it is not appropriate based on what is going on in another zone." This is exactly what they should have done. The T E C D is supposed to be less intense in use. At the very least, the applicant should have done a truck traffic count in the LI zone and compared it to their projected use in this application. They should also have identified the type of trucks used. Their application is for tractor-trailers. The LI zone is predominantly box trucks. The LI zone does not have parking for 53-foot trailers, and does not have the mule trucks that would move them around. There's no Hillsborough ordinance that includes dimensions for tractor-trailer parking. The applicant has known this since at least July 2024. As far as I know, there are no waivers or variances requested, and their testimony is complete. The applicant should have requested a waiver or variance for trailer parking. It's not a given that since you can process a tractor-trailer at a dock, that you automatically get a parking space for trailers. It doesn't matter that other warehouses in other zones may have gotten away with trailer parking. The T E C D zone is supposed to be less intense in use than other zones. The applicant kept saying that warehousing is a permitted use. The Hillsborough General Industrial Zone called for warehousing, shipping, and receiving. The T E Z D zone calls for warehousing, shipping, and receiving located completely within an enclosed building. This is a major distinction in definition, a qualifier. Both the Hillsborough Ordinance 188-112, entitled Economic Development District, and the 2005 Phase 2 Master Plan, Chapter 8, lists conditional uses for light manufacturing, which uses the same terminology as T E C D warehousing, quote, "located completely within an enclosed building." Both state, quote, "provided all products are kept within an enclosed building." This would apply to enclosed warehousing, all products kept within an enclosed building. If you have products within an enclosed building, a tractor-trailer would go to the dock, be unloaded, be reloaded, or leave empty. This would be two trips, one in and one out. When you introduce trailer parking, it only benefits the operator, not the residents. It creates over 100 storage units on-site, which are not within an enclosed warehouse. It also doubles the amount of on-site traffic. For example, if a tractor-trailer comes in, drops the trailer in a parking space, then a mule truck moves that trailer to a dock, and after processing, a mule truck moves that trailer back to a parking space to be picked up later, this would be four moves for that trailer, not two, as described for an enclosed warehouse. All this movement takes place outside the building and in the parking area, using backup alarms for every move. This does not promote the peace and solitude of the residents as required in the amendment that created the T E C D zone. The pipeline also creates an unbuffered corridor for noise to travel. Trailer parking also introduces mule trucks. Mule trucks are not included in the T E C D ordinance and not included in the Land Use Development Code 188. The applicant should have requested a waiver or variance for mule trucks, which the LI zone on one side does not have, and obviously, the agricultural zone across the street does not have. The use of mule trucks makes this much more intense in use. The Application's Operations Expert will not give us a count of how many of these trucks will be used. Some of these warehouses are almost exclusively mule truck operations. If you look at this photo, you'll notice that none of the trailers at the docks or in the parking spaces have trucks attached. All of these trailers would be moved around by mule trucks, you can see four of them in this poster. Mule trucks will idle in the summer for AC and in the winter for heat, 24/7. The applicant's Operations Expert cannot tell us how they would refuel the mule trucks. Can you show the other poster? If they plan on refueling with a tanker truck on-site, as in this example, it's environmentally dangerous for residents, well water, and a Royce Brook, and should be prohibited. And when it comes to the use of this complex, the applicant's operations testimony confirmed a tractor-trailer can come in, drop its trailer in a parking space, and pick up a trailer that's been processed at the warehouse and moved back to a parking space. This would be a dispatched operation. This tractor-trailer will never go to the warehouse. This will make this a freight terminal, a truck terminal, or truck depot, which are prohibited uses based on Hillsborough Ordinance 188-97. All right, Homestead Road is a rural two-lane road with no shoulders. The traffic traveling west to east will be traveling at least 45 miles an hour. All the trucks exiting this complex will be making a right-hand turn west to 206, and will be traveling at between 1 to 5 miles an hour when they make their turns. Depending on which traffic study you use, if only 10%, which could be 30 to 70 trucks per day, misses the mark for a perfect right-hand turn and crosses over the center line into the oncoming traffic, this will cause a dangerous safety hazard that Hillsborough would be responsible for if this application is approved. And I'll close with the following points. In December 2022, I asked the applicant's planner, Ms. Kaphon, this question. "It seems to me this tractor-trailer warehouse complex and potential distribution center is larger and more intense than anything in the LI district. Can you tell me how this development is transitional between LI and residential homes?" Her response was, quote, "So we're not here to speak about the development, we're not at that part." This application, this applicant has never answered that question. On May 25th, 2023, Ms. Kaphon testified that she appeared before 400 different planning or zoning boards. I then asked her, "Have you ever encountered a T E C D zone or Transitional Economic Development Zone in any other town?" Her response was, "No, not by name." At the same meeting, Ms. Haas asked Ms. Kaphon, "How do you define the word transitional?" Her answer was, quote, "In between two things." Was there any communication with Mr. Maskey or Mr. Coys about the definitions in a zone she has never encountered before? Did the applicant ask any questions about the definition of transitional, the distinction between a completely enclosed warehouse and just a warehouse, and what conforms or is appropriate to the T E C D? There's nothing in civic clerk to indicate Ms. Kaphon asked any of these questions. I'll repeat her quote from July 2024. "Well, I don't know if we can compare the use of this property and say it is not appropriate based on what's going on in another zone." The residents of Hillsborough should not have to suffer with this industrial complex because the applicant did not do their due diligence. This application does not comply with the requirements of the T E C D zone and must be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, do you have an issue if I excuse Mr. Dean?
Nope.
Merrill Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. I have sat in about three-quarters of these many meetings, three years now, and have watched the testimony for most of the rest. Like many, I marveled at the sheer size of the projected facility, so close to residential neighborhoods on one side and secondary roads on the other. Our land use law has many protections for our residents, from limiting storage vehicles due to fire hazard, to being able to reside here with, quote-unquote, "peace and tranquility." When you really read through our land use law, you are made to feel like people have a right to live here with some level of quiet, some level of natural light and dark, some level of fresh air, and that is likely why truck depots are completely banned in our township. So I keep asking myself, why can't this application just follow Hillsborough's code? Number one, the application was incomplete from the start because it is entirely speculative, without any particular owner or operator in mind. Our land use law, 188-31E dot one, specifies, quote, "There shall be included a written description of the proposed uses and operations of the buildings, including the number of employees or members of non-residential buildings, the proposed number of shifts to be worked, and maximum employees on each shift, expected truck and tractor-trailer traffic, emission of noise, glare, vibration, heat, odor, air, and water pollution, safety hazards, and anticipated expansion plans incorporated in the building design." But no such description was provided, and technically, the application was incomplete. Over time, the developer submitted hypothetical operations information that more or less maxed out the building size, over 500,000 square feet, 281 parking spaces, three shifts, 24 by 7, 90 docks, 137 trailer parking spaces. It was their applicant's architect, not an operations manager, since they had none, who stated that the building could be customized for just about any warehouse function, including a high cube, Amazon-style warehouse. Still, three years later, there is no known tenant who has testified to the operation they will actually be running. No detailed floor plan has been submitted. If the developer is going to insist on these high-intensity upper limits, then they take a risk that their application has too much noise, light, and air pollution, and too much traffic for, for a transitional site so close to residential areas. Two, there is no connection to the bypass. The T E C D zone, Transitional Economic Development Zone, ordinance was passed in 2011, but the zone was proposed to have a connector entrance and exit to Homestead Road from the bypass, but was then passed into local law without the bypass. This is documented right in the T E C D zone definition in Hillsborough's land use code. Homestead Road is not only a narrow secondary road, not recommended for truck traffic, it also has a lot of changing elevation. At the rail overpass, there is no visibility to the other side, and there is already a warning sign posted that says "Hill Blocks View," quote-unquote. Any truck, excuse me, any truck on that overpass could endanger any vehicle coming the other way, and couldn't follow the four-foot clearance law for bicycles in either direction. There is no direct access from Homestead to the bypass. Traffic will be exiting Homestead onto Route 206, or worse yet, across Route 206, where there is now a pending warehouse application and a super shop right plan near that intersection. Three, trailer parking. The T E C D ordinance is silent on trailer parking. Our land use law code never defines trailer parking per se, only loading parking, which would be for loading docks. For the warehouses, there is only a minimum requirement of parking spaces of normally 10 by 20 feet, which is for a car, basically, and loading spaces, which are 60 feet in length. But no parking space size is specified for parked trailers. Perhaps this is why the T E C D ordinance, just like the light industrial ordinance, is silent on trailer parking. It's not really allowed in our town with at least a variance for the parking space size. However, our code has very strict rules banning truck depots, truck terminals, and the like. Once you add trailer parking, especially when the trailers can be picked up and dropped off directly to the trailer parking without ever going to the dock, you are in effect creating a transshipping operation, which is considered by many transportation engineering definitions to be a truck terminal function, which is banned in Hillsborough. Hold on. Four, double-stack trailers. One of the warehouses was designed with double-stack trailer parking, taking the back row right up to the property line. The architect has already stated that the mule trucks would have to be used to pull the trailer out from the front row in order to pull out the trailers in the back row. Again, our code in Section 188-68C does not allow double parking if both rows cannot be accessed directly. Quote, "Individual loading and parking spaces shall be served by interior driveways" Quote, “Individual loading and parking spaces shall be served by interior driveways and be designed for vehicle access without requiring the moving of any other vehicle. Spaces shall not have direct access from the public streets or major interior drives and roads,” unquote. The applicant’s engineer has since updated the design to eliminate a second row of parking, but it’s kind of shameful that the public had to point out this infraction, and that in removing the second row of parking to meet code, they also removed a retaining wall when they are so very close to the CSX railroad tracks. Five, this zone is not transitional. I’m sorry, the project is not transitional. The T E C D Zone described in 188-107.2 is transitional between light industrial/corporate development and residential. Since this development backs up to residences and residential streets, it stands to reason that the plan should be of an even lower intensity than a commercial zone, which could be neighborly to a residential zone. The T E C D ordinance refers to the master plan. The T E C D Zone was established in the 2005 Master Plan Phase II to encourage, quote, “to encourage the development of employment areas near residential neighborhoods with design that assures the peace and solitude of residents,” unquote. How can two buildings comprising nine football fields of warehouse space, 90 docks, 137 trailer parking spaces, 281 regular parking spaces, and a 24-hour operation assure the peace and solitude of nearby residents when this project would be several times bigger than almost any warehouse in Hillsborough in the light industrial zone and bigger than most pending warehouse applications around the state? Six, pedestrian and bicycle access. The T E C District Code has provisions for pedestrian circulation in 188-107-24F. Originally, the developer announced that they were not planning to implement such circulation both inside the property and going out to Homestead Road because they felt the road was not really residential and didn’t warrant it. There were no — I think there were no homes on the road. At the next meeting, they relented and put in walkways around each building but still declined to provide an interconnection between the two buildings, crosswalks every 20 or so cars from the parking lot to the sidewalk at the building, or any bicycle path at all, despite what is specified in 188-107-2F6. Quote, “All portions of the development shall be linked via sidewalk and pathway network as approved by the planning board or Board of Adjustment. The site shall be pedestrian-oriented, with a design that enables and encourages pedestrian bicycle circulation with linkages to surrounding areas. The applicant shall utilize the master plan in developing a pedestrian bicycle pathway network,” unquote. Any sort of protective covering over the walkway to the main entrance or shelter at the corner of Homestead Road is simply not in the plan. And in 188-107.2F4, supplemental regulations to the T E C D District, pedestrian-scale lighting, rain protection in the form of awnings, and use of landscaping overhangs and canopies are suggested to protect from the sun are all suggested or required. We see none of this in the plans. Seven, the operation does not take place completely within an enclosed building. The developer has stated that trailers could be dropped off and picked up from the trailer parking area. In that case, the truck itself would never pull into a dock, as Mr. Martin said, and the items in the trailer would be processed without going through the warehouse. So contrary to the stipulations of the T E C D Zone, the operation would not take place completely within the building. It violates the zone. Eight, the pipeline crossing. The developer is violating Section 188-75C of the Township Code regarding building near or crossing pipelines. Quote, “No new building construction or land disturbance shall be printed within 75 feet by right-of-way of any distribution, gathering, or transmission line. This applies to any land disturbance or construction involved in the crossing of a pipeline to provide access to a property when no reasonable access is permitted.” I think an end quote belongs there. Could this have been designed better? Is there more reasonable access? Probably. Nine, stream corridor. The stream corridor section of the Natural Features Clause 188-64D states, among other things, that the purpose of the stream corridor protection is to, quote, “ensure that only appropriately placed development on a property will not increase the danger to human plant or animal life,” and that it represents an acceptable use of the land in relation to the hazards involved, unquote. There is nothing acceptable about the use of land if it involves warehouses. Permitted uses in stream corridors include farming, wildlife sanctuaries, game farms, fishing areas, unpaved hiking, biking, and bridle trails and the like. So apart from the zone, how can we possibly put a warehouse right on top of a stream corridor? Ten, subdivision. The developer is seeking approval of a subdivision with two separate landowners, one property governed by the licensed site remediation professional, L S R P, and one not governed by the L S R P as part of the applications. Also, one of the buildings crosses the original property line between the two owners. The planning board could have required the applicant to go to zoning first to have the land vacated before property lines were redrawn for the application to be heard, but for whatever reason, they did not. This is really not a subdivision of one property, it’s a redivision of two. Can anyone cite examples in our township history in which two property owners have shared an application? The planning board had a whole executive session on just how to handle this topic in September of 2022 and concluded that the developer’s planner would need to submit a report about the subdivision only. But a full report was not written, only a few disjointed memos that did not even reflect a full understanding of our land use code, as Mr. Martin said. Either way, in order to vacate the property, it seems that the planning board has to make some determination on subdivision before it can go forward and approve the application. What justification is there to vacate two properties and rearrange them except to fulfill this ill-founded application? Note that the township passed an ordinance now, almost two years ago, that banned warehouses partially in order to protect the health and safety of the residents. I understand this application is grandfathered, but protecting the health and safety of the residents is vitally important, and this application, already not conforming to our code in so many ways, is also not proving in to be good for the health and safety of our residents, all the residents, not just the ones who live behind the warehouses, the ones who drive our township roads, the school buses that use Homestead Road, people walking or driving through the town center. The increased truck traffic in town will literally completely change the character of our town. The developer clearly doesn’t care that they are in violation of so many of our laws. The planning board has no choice but to turn this down, and even with what I consider a lot of extra time that they’ve given the developer, they have not come around to conformance with our code. I thank all the planning board volunteers, as well as the public who has sat through countless meetings. A no vote is the only choice in this matter.
Good evening. First thing I’d —
Get to the close to the mic, sorry. It doesn’t carry.
First thing I want to say is what they said. I’m — my name is Pat McGee. I’ve lived in Hillsborough on Willow’s Edge for 23 years, and I completed a graduate degree in geoscience in 2019. I am not represented by SWAT. My home is about a half a mile from the applicant property. I’m here to share my opposition to the proposed warehouse. I’d like to make six brief points pertaining to the physical aspects of the warehouse proposal. The footprint and rainstorms, the impervious nature of the footprint of the warehouse itself, and the parking lot, and the chemicals that will leach from the trucks and tires and asphalt will percolate into the surrounding soil and contribute to the runoff toward the Royce Brook tributary system. The topography. The proposed site is the highest elevation in the immediate surrounding area. Using the Hillsborough Topographic Map as a source, the proposed warehouse average elevation, the land itself, is approximately 36 meters above sea level or 111 feet. The White Meadow neighborhood behind the proposed warehouse is about 27 meters or 88 feet. Willow’s Edge, my neighborhood, is 26 meters or 85 feet. So from the warehouse to the surrounding neighborhoods, everything’s downhill. Light pollution. Lights in the proposed parking lot will be easily visible at night from the lower surrounding neighborhoods and contribute to light pollution. Noise pollution. Traffic from the proposed warehouse will be easily heard in our neighborhoods. Air quality. Neighborhoods along Willow Road, being east of the proposed property, are in the path of the west-to-east prevailing winds, carrying diesel fumes into our neighborhoods. Homestead Road being a narrow and hilly road has no shoulders. The road is used by commuters, school buses, and young drivers coming and going to and from the nearby high school, which is about a mile from the proposed warehouse. The presence of large trucks from an AD Bay warehouse could introduce risk to this local traffic. In my mind, I imagine having a home on the White Meadow neighborhood and looking out the kitchen window up to a four-story warehouse so close to my home. What’s going to happen to property vowers in our neighborhoods? For the above reasons, I oppose the construction of the warehouse. Thank you.
Ah, do I have to do the thing? If there are only a podium, huh? Mr. Brooks, I got you, man. All right, sorry. Grant Colmer, Taylor Avenue, not affiliated with any of the objectors. I apologize for just looking at my screen. I’m just gonna read, so I apologize. Long time coming. Been attending and watch every single meeting relative this application, and I’ve come before you to express the profound and deeply troubling concerns with the application, and there are six major areas which I want to touch upon tonight. First, the excessive intensity and scale of the application. The applicant proposes two massive warehouse buildings with a total of 500 million square feet. We know these are not small, modest structures. They are enormous buildings proposed for a property in the T E C D Zone. I know you’re aware of the stated purpose of the zone, and accordance with the 2010 Master Plan Amendment was to provide a transitional employment generating development between high-intensity industrial areas like the Larkin properties to the west and the existing residential development to the east here, specifically aiming to minimize impacts on nearby neighborhoods and assure the peace and solitude of residents. The sheer scale of the proposed building, one, which is noted to be 1,025 feet long, is argued to be highly oversized relative to the zoning requirements and incompatible with preserving the site’s natural features. While the applicant argues warehousing isn’t identified as a high-intensity use, causing concern for the master plan’s discussion of the zone, it is clear the proposed size and scale are utterly inappropriate and do not fit the intent of the transitional zone. I would respectfully disagree with the notion that this project is in current form. It truly, by right, as was testified, when its dimensions seemingly violate the spirit of, not the letter, of the zone’s intent and design standards. Next, the issue of traffic safety and instructional limitations is really paramount. We’ve heard testimony acknowledging the current pavement width of Homestead Road varying between 22 and 26 feet is inadequate to accommodate the anticipated increase in truck volume, traffic volume from this project. The project is expected to generate a significant truck traffic estimated by Panini to be approximately 160 trucks per day with a total daily volume potentially reaching 200, 300 trucks. When suggested widening of the road with the required by the board’s engineer, the applicant simply ignored the issue, providing evidence that they do not care about the health and safety of the residents within our town. Concerns about potential off-site traffic conditions have also been raised, and the proposed use of description is required to include except truck and trailer traffic. The safety hazards posed by the large trucks navigating this road and the surrounding network are, again, in direct concern for the health and safety of the public. We are still waiting for full testimony on the tendency of the site and operations to truly understand the project’s traffic implications. The assumption that suitable infrastructure exists simply because the zone permits industrial uses is contradicted by the very recommendations for road widening and the clear limitations of Homestead Road. Third, we cannot ignore the significant environmental impact and stream corridor concerns. The site is located near the Royce Brook, as we know. The proposed involves clear-cutting a massive number of trees. This is a level of deforestation that inevitably requires extensive changes to the existing topography and has been argued contributes to climate change and releasing stored carbon. Furthermore, there are ongoing concerns regarding the applicability of the township’s stream corridor ordinance to this property and potential violations of the Freshwater Wetland Protection Act. There’s not minor technicalities, these are not minor technicalities, they are critical issues affecting the ecological health of our community. The Environmental Commission has expressed concerns, and the Watershed Institute has urged the board to delay the action until the environmental issues are resolved. We need to ensure that any development does not exacerbate existing drainage issues or negatively impact sensitive environmental areas. To the fourth major concern, which is store water management deficiencies. The project proposes a substantial increase in impervious surface coverage over 900,000 square feet. While the applicant states their detention basins conform to the state and municipality regulations, questions have been raised about the inadequacy of the soil testing for the stormwater system designed. There’s also been discussion regarding the points of analysis for stormwater flow and tributaries of the Royce Brook. While the applicant states the N J D U P approved was granted based on a single point of analysis, should be concerned about the potential scouring or erosion of other discharge points. Effective stormwater management is critical to prevent flooding and protect downstream properties, neighboring towns, and natural resources. And we, as a town, need to assure the assurance that the proposed system is truly robust enough to handle the increased runoff from such a vast, impervious surfaces, especially considering the sensitivity of nearby areas and the past concerns about stormwater discharge and the exacerbated flooding that we experience in Hillsborough and that of Manville. Fifth, the development is fundamentally incompatible with the community charter. The master plan sought to incorporate employment areas near the residential neighborhoods in a way that preserves further peace and solitude. This project, with its massive buildings, constant truck traffic, and destruction of the natural features, is arguably to be in opposite of that goal. It represents an utterly inappropriate scale and size. That will severely impact the neighboring residents’ health and well-being and lead to the diminished quality of life. In the submitted community impact statement, there’s analysis on the population cohorts, but the impact goes beyond demographics. It affects the very fabric of our community for safety and our environment. The lack of pedestrian or bicycle connections on the site and along Homestead Road further emphasize the auto-centric model that is incompatible with the pedestrian-oriented community goal. And finally, for the speculative nature of this development, leaves significant questions unanswered. We still lack critical details regarding the proposed uses and operations of the buildings. We do not know the exact number of employees per shift or the specific operation details that will dictate the actual traffic generation noise or other impacts. This lack of clarity makes it incredibly difficult, if not impossible, for this board and the public to fully assess the project’s impact. The applicant’s counsel acknowledges that they will provide testimony on tendency and operations, and that requirement for this information has been ongoing. After years of hearings, this fundamental information remains elusive. Approving a project of this magnitude without clear understanding of its operation reality is akin to buying a pig in a poke. Good one, right? I didn’t know that one before I researched it. We won’t know the full consequence until it’s too late. As the planning board, you obviously have a duty to perform the diligent site plan review and vigorous enforcement of the principles and standards embodied in the master plan and land development regulations. Based on the evidence presented, this proposal, in my opinion, does not satisfy the intent and purpose of the T E C D Zone or multiple design standards. The concerns raised regarding excessive scale, traffic dangers, environmental destruction, stormwater issues, incompatibility with our community, and the speculative nature of the applications are not minor. They strike at the heart of whether this development is appropriate for Hillsborough. I implore you to consider the overwhelming evidence demonstrating the fundamental deficiencies and negative impacts of this proposed warehouse development. Please listen to the concerns of the residents who will bear the brunt of these impacts. Do not let this incompatible, oversized, and speculative project to proceed. Deny this application for the health, safety, and welfare and the character of our community. Thank you for your time.
Keith Sherman, 16 Walnut Grove Road, not affiliated. We’ve heard all sorts of facts and figures, data referencing studies, manuals, charts, graphs produced by various local, county, state, and federal agencies, as well as professional and scientific entities. None of that is relevant to this specific case because all that tells us is that the average for hundreds or thousands of studies is X. They can’t give us specifics because there is no actual tenant. So everything they’re telling us is theoretical at best and certainly misleading. I’d like to introduce some reality. I have decades of experience in the field of warehousing, distribution, logistics, and trucking. I have hands-on experience. I was involved in warehouse productivity studies, site location, project management. I functioned as an internal consultant for a number of major retail companies. As an example to show why the numbers are irrelevant, I had one case where I was assigned to a half a million square foot building, 100 doors. We generated 1,000 truck moves a day, and that was just a typical day. I was assigned to a million-square-foot building. I was director of logistics. We had 50 doors, and I moved 50 trucks a day, million square feet. So you have two opposite ends of the spectrum. So you have two opposite ends of the spectrum, and all we know is that the building is going to be X square feet. Mr. Dean himself, at the last time he testified, said himself that there is no correlation between the number of doors, the size of the building, and the number of truck moves a day. And what I've just told you is an example of why we need to assume worst-case scenario. They'll tell you anything. I used to do what they do. You can make the facts say anything you want. But we have to live with the reality. They're gonna go home, and we're gonna be left with the results. Mr. Dean also mentioned that there would be no security entrances. Every building I was assigned to had security gates, assigned security guards. There were schedules, receiving times. Everybody had appointments, and nobody was allowed in without one. At one point, we had so many trucks waiting to come in for their appointments, we had to pay to widen the road leading to our facility. Mr. Dean also said that there was no need to widen Homestead Road. There was no reason for a turning lane, and there's no problem with the trucks exiting the facility, making right turns. He thought that they'd be able to stay in the one lane. Building of this size just doesn't belong in that location. At any time in my experience, if I had recommended that site for that kind of a facility, they would have shown me the door. And as I come to all these meetings, meeting after meeting, I changed the words. From a professional standpoint, that location for that type of a facility, the only word that comes to mind is stupid. Mr. Dean also stated that the traffic study they did was at both ends of Homestead Road. I don't believe he mentioned anything about studying any traffic upstream or downstream from 206 to neighboring communities. We've had the mayor of Manville here to protest. Now we've had Montgomery here making their case known. There is no intention to do anything to widen the intersection at 206 and Homestead Road, and as you know, if you've experienced driving around here, the trucks cannot make that turn without ending up on the other side. And the same thing is true even on Hillsborough Road, which is wider. Mr. Dean said if there's any need to change that intersection at 206 and Homestead Road, that's not their problem, it's the state's problem. And the planners who planned the bypass obviously didn't think Homestead Road would ever be used for this type of facility. There's no entrance, no exit, and now hundreds, if not more, trucks daily are now going to be using what we've designated Main Street, Hillsborough. Willow Road and River Road have now become main north-south corridors because nobody wants to deal with 206 or the bypass, for that matter. Rush hour is a nightmare if you have to turn onto Willow Road from Hillsborough Road. And it's not unusual to see large trucks parked on 206 in front of Burger King, the diner, McDonald's. Now we had hundreds of trucks. The drivers need someplace to stop for lunch. They need someplace to spend their eight or 10-hour sleep breaks. Where are they gonna park? When I was driving, I parked at the Lowe's. I had permission to park there over the weekend. How many hundreds of trucks can park at Lowe's? New Jersey does not have any truck stops in the area. 206 is the road to nowhere. My experience driving, it would take me sometimes an hour to get from here to Princeton. Warehouse and distribution centers of this size should only be located along major highways, and as a driver, there were times I had to call for police assistance because I found myself on a residential road. I couldn't maneuver safely, and they had to back me out. And finally, the proposal doesn't make sense, even from the developer's point of view. I don't understand why they're maintaining the adamacy to have such a facility. Why not make it something more conducive to the neighborhood? And as a professional and as a neighborhood resident, it's frightening to think that that could happen here in Hillsborough. Thank you.
Anyone who comes to Hillsborough knows that this is a special town. The streets are safe, the air is clean, and it's beautifully green. This is why families move here. This is why we have so many homes here. And in this part of town, where they want to build the warehouse, you can still look up and see a sky full of stars. This is what's at stake in this application. This is what's at stake for the families who live here, the families who've poured their life savings into homes here, and the ones who look to make a future. This warehouse will irreversibly change our landscape. It will increase flooding risks to nearby homes. It will fill the air with pollution and noise because of the daily barrage of truck traffic. And it is this road that our school buses use to take our kids to school, to high school, to middle school, to intermediate school. This is the road where the new ShopRite will be built. Anyone who lives on this side of town or comes here for school or groceries will have to contend with truck after truck after truck just to complete their daily responsibilities. You need to get to Walgreens, you're gonna have to deal with the trucks. You need to get to the doctor, you're gonna have to deal with the trucks. The increased traffic, the noise, the congestion, it will make an already busy route even harder for families, students, and shoppers. And we know from testimony two sessions ago that the truck traffic forecast in the report was based on observing similar warehouses for just one day, just one day. There is no way that report can reliably predict what we will actually face. Beyond the environmental and traffic concerns, have we fully considered the cost of the application? First and most obvious, our roads will need constant repair from the truck traffic. We'll need more police patrols to keep our school buses safe and keep our residents safe. Who is going to pay for that? And then there's the impact on our homes. How attractive will our homes be to potential buyers with a warehouse in our backyard? How many families will want to spend their life savings on a home in this area? And how will this affect property values and the tax revenue they generate that fuels our town and keeps our streets safe? And what about the rest of us who have built our lives here? We've invested in our homes, our schools, our community. Are we just supposed to accept the financial hit when our property values decline? And what percentage is that gonna be? And when you compound that for home after home after home, how much of the revenue is going to be impacted when nobody wants to move here? And long-term, what happens to our schools, our services? What happens to the quality of life that makes Hillsborough such a special place to live? This is what's at stake. It isn't just business. This is personal, and it's as personal as it gets. We urge you to reject this application because it is wrong for our town. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jim Magid, 19 Beetle Street, Elmead, New Jersey, Montgomery Township. Not represented by anyone here. I've only been here attending the meetings about for the last nine months or so, and I applaud all of you for enduring this long process of considering this development. But I just, from our perspective, from the Montgomery Township perspective, the downstream perspective, if you will, I just wanted to echo some things that have also already been said very eloquently, but I just want to reinforce what's been said. The traffic studies that I'm familiar with that were done here were done really at the 206 and Homestead Road intersection. And I don't think that that was a very extensive study, from what I understood, but anyway, the studies were done there. But there was no consideration that I'm aware of, of the bypass intersection with 206, which in itself is a disaster of a design, and there's just, you know, inevitably gonna be accidents there in the near future because in the last two weeks, I've seen two or three truck, tractor-trailer trucks come down from going south on 206 and making a left at that intersection at Mountain View. Now, you know, off the road, onto the side shoulder, and really disrupting traffic flow as that happens. So as we generate more traffic of that same nature, it's a real concern in that intersection. Going down a little bit further, you have the 601 exit off of 206, which is being used more and more by commercial traffic, tractor-trailers, dump trucks. And typically, they are unfamiliar with the area and traveling at a pretty strong rate of speed, and when they make that right-hand turn onto 601, if you're sitting there waiting at the traffic light, it's a pretty scary adventure to have this tractor-trailer barreling down on you. So it's another thing for you to consider with this additional traffic. And the fact that there's no bypass entrance for Homestead Road is really, I think, a deal-breaker here, because when you're forcing all this traffic now out on the 206, there's a lot of concerns that were expressed here tonight in terms of just those large tractor-trailers entering onto 206, and with ongoing traffic there, what's the impact gonna be with the residential vehicles that they're encountering? And again, most of these tractor-trailer drivers are probably gonna be unfamiliar with the area, so they're not really sure which way they're going, they're not really sure how they get back to the main artery, potentially. So there's a lot of consideration there. It's interesting that, for some reason, we haven't been told what the actual use is for those warehouses, these warehouses. We've been told that it won't be this, and it won't be that, and it won't be that, but we haven't been told what it will be. And if I was gonna buy an automobile, you know, if I'm gonna buy a car, I want to know what the car's features are. I want to be able to drive the car. I want to understand and appreciate the car and therefore be able to more educatedly select that vehicle. I don't know how the board could consider this application without really knowing what the end product's gonna be. I mean, other than the fact that it's a structure, what's gonna happen inside and how's that gonna impact the community that we represent? And finally, I think that that's a major reason why, in all these months of attending these meetings and talking to various people who have been here and endured the three years, I've never heard anybody come in here and say, "I support the application." So that's a huge indication to me that it's just not the right fit for this area. So with that in mind, I thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I hope you will consider denying this application. Thank you.
Paul Malecki. I've been, I'm not affiliated with anybody here. I've been a 40-year-long resident of Hillsborough at three different locations. Most recently, for the last 22 years, I had White Meadow, one of those houses that I'll be looking out my back door at a warehouse. Excuse me. My backyard, my fence line is approximately 1,300 feet from the projects out of being built. My home, especially my backyard, has been everything to my family since we moved in. We built a real nice oasis out there. Still love it. We chose, raised our family here despite commuting into New York for 30 years because of the safety, support, and the overall country-like setting in Hillsborough. Excuse me. Everything that's allowed us to hang these signs on the front of the building and in this room. All the changes, if these projects go through, everything, that all changes with all the laws sacrificing public safety, congestion, noise, pollution to our roads and our neighborhoods. The project will be releasing hundreds of trucks weekly that will have to access and exit these facilities through residential developments that border Willow, Amo Roads, and other residential roads in order to access Western Canal Road for points east. The alternative is a steep rise up Homestead Road to Route 206 that is traveled by many residents, high school and middle school students via cars and buses. We don't even know the final uses of these warehouses until they are built. These are spec warehouses. The ratables from these projects, it's not worth it in a long time. I said before that we had to deal with a lot of problems in the community over the years, the bypass, 206 widen, but we understood what these projects were all about. They were part of the master plan, and they were good for the community. We understood that they were all good for the community and the township and the master plan. They helped the township gain all these accolades that we've been able to post over the years. My family and I don't understand how these projects, hundreds of trucks on already crowded roads, is good for that master plan, no matter how high the ratables will be able to get. We heard from a New Jersey law enforcement officer last month who spent his entire career dealing in law enforcement and trucking industry. His comments on how truck drivers will just ignore roadway limits on Willow Road for a ticket, that's scary. And the driver, and when a driver hits his maximum hour meter and has to park wherever they are, and that parking can only be enforced by state agencies, again, that's scary for the community, having trucks parked all over the place. Shortened to the point, these projects, if these projects go through, warehouses mean more trucks passing through our neighborhood, creating more congestion. More trucks in warehouses mean more of everything: traffic, noise, pollution, lights, and deterioration of our roads, and the potential flooding that we've seen before with the building of the warehouses. More trucks mean fewer safe roads for pedestrians, cyclists, and children. More trucks in warehouses mean our property values go down. And it won't be long that we'll have to change these signs there. That's why I'm recommending to the board here that we not approve these projects.
Hello, Natalie Gorman, 53, Winding Way, Hillsborough. First off, I want to thank everybody for their time, behind me, in front of me, all around. I know it was a lot of time, a lot of time well-spent, a lot of time maybe wasted. First, I want to say I agree with the points that have been made by my neighbors and the remarks that they made, so I'm gonna try to not rehash anything. I've been crossing things out so that I don't go through things that have already been said. So for contemplative question that I have first. So sitting as just a layman, listening to the expert testimony and responses to questions, and thinking about it from a speculative perspective, there's forecasted reports on traffic, on environmental impact, on all different kinds of things. How often do we go back and say, "Were those speculations and predictions correct?" And what happens if they're not? Because the cost is already there. The warehouse, the building, whatever it is, is already there. We can't knock it down. It's there, so the impact is already done. Who takes the responsibility for that? And when does it go away? It doesn't. So once it's there, it's there forever. Whether or not we have an occupant, whether or not it's partially occupied, we have an occupant, and we have a building, and we have whatever traffic comes along with Some of the neighbors brought up things, certainly that I had on here and I crossed off. I want to go back to the subdivision, because Mr. Bernstein actually talked about the subdivision early on. The subdivision is not required, but it's a huge profitable benefit to only the developer. I specifically asked about this early in the process, and the developers' witness, I think it was the planner or something like that, clearly articulated the one-sided benefit. At that point, Mr. Bernstein advised them that they were proceeding at their own risk, quotes. "There was no compelling reason or guarantee that this subdivision would be granted. However, they chose to proceed without revising their plan in any significant way that impacted their request for a subdivision on two separate buildable lots. The subdivision approval needed for the plans, the way that they were submitted, is totally unnecessary to have anything built. It only benefits the developer and the seller while causing irreparable harm to the land and the community surrounding it. So therefore, I'm strongly, very strongly, against a subdivision that primarily benefits the developer and not the taxpayers, not the residents, not the businesses in town, but yet the developer. It will very likely strain our local resources, as you've heard about, reduce our property values, which you've heard about, and disrupt our community cohesion. I'd rather encourage solutions that offer clear benefits to the broader community and not just the developers' profits. This approach safeguards the well-being of current residents and ensures any development This approach safeguards the well-being of current residents and ensures any development aligns with the town's long-term vision and our values. Promoting responsible benefits, proposing responsible development benefits everyone and prevents short-sighted decisions driven strongly by profit alone. So steering clear of development-centric plans and advocating for the community's best interests is key to long-term success." So I do expect, and I hope for, very thoughtful and very full development and disclosure amongst the planning board as you're making your decision, things that respect the way of our life and our well-being of future generations as well. Let's protect our neighborhoods from industrial encroachment and champion sustainable growth. Let's stand firm in safeguarding our community's character. We, as local residents and taxpayers, reject the proposed warehouse plan. Championing responsible development that honors our shared values and future is really most important to this board. So let's work collectively. We're not against each other, we are working collectively together. To ensure our community's voice shapes its future, by working together, we can create a future that respects our past and embraces that sustainable growth. Let's act now and ensure Hillsborough remains a place we're proud to call home. So please, please, deny this proposal. There are no solid reasons that the proposal should be accepted, and when it goes to court, which we've been hearing all along, oh, it's going to court, it's going to court. So when it goes to court, we want to stand firm, and we want the judge to understand all of the valid points that we bring, so that it's not argumentative. Thank you very much.
I'm not affiliated with anybody but my wife. So here we are, three years into these meetings. I believe me and my wife have been here throughout, because this impacts us probably more than anyone. We're adjacent to this monstrosity of a building, okay? Our property borders the biggest warehouse, all right? We will be directly impacted, all right? I understand that, you know, the landowner has a right to develop their property. Well, this zone was originally a CDZ zone, which was fifty acres owning. In 2010 and 2011, in front of some of these exact board members, you convinced it to go down to five acres owning. Now they bring up that they want to subdivide the land into bigger pieces. I believe, you know, the intent was to keep things small-sized, all right? There's no hardship if the subdivision were denied, which it doesn't have to be approved. There has to be a benefit to the community as well as to the landowner, okay? So with that in mind, I'd like to know, because I've seen no reports, has the town done its due diligence on home valuations when warehouses or buildings of this size are put next to residential areas? I haven't seen any research reports. Another thing I haven't seen is any reports on crime rate increases. You know, when you put in warehouses of this size, have we done research to see what happens to crime in the area? I haven't seen those. We've listened to testimony throughout these proceedings, some good, some bad, and some just utterly ridiculous. A few points I would like to stress, I already hit the subdivision. The land can be developed as it is without the subdivision, so there's no hardship to be rendered there, okay? Now, we heard testimony on water management and the elevation of the water basins, the retention basins, is going to force pressure to downstream even when Royce Brook is above flood stage. So water's going to empty into that stream regardless of how much flooding's already occurring, okay? So now, through all of this, I believe, like my wife said, it's going to get to the courts one way or the other. When it does, I believe it's going to come down to what was the intent of this zone, okay? No judge can tell you what this board intended for this zone. But luckily for us, we have two members, Mr. Sarachi and Mr. Wagner, who were here in 2000 then, in 2011. And I encourage all board members to reread those transcripts from those meetings, because there was board members, some of them no longer with us, but they represented the board, and they sold the zoning to the residents at that time. They made promises, they spelled it out what could and couldn't go there. And I'd like that to be reviewed by you guys, to make sure that there's integrity amongst the board and what you sell things to the public. I think that's it. Yep, that's it. So thank you for your time, and I do hope you deny this application.
Anyone left from Hillsborough like Ms. D? I'll wait.
Out of respect for Hillsborough residents, I'll go last.
Good evening, board members, chairman. My name is Richard Underco, 921 Lewis Street in the borough of Manville. I'm not associated with any of the objectors, and I'm not speaking tonight as an elected official. I'm speaking as a resident of Somerset County and a lifelong resident of the borough of This is pretty simple to sum up this application in two words: common sense. Where is the common sense? Similar to the Western LLC warehouse application, this location makes no sense. A yellow, double-lined, single-lane country road in each direction does not fit the intense use of the proposed project. I worked in Piscataway for over thirty years, so that may make me a traffic expert to some degree. Took me eight hours to get home one night. Piscataway warehouses are next to Interstate 287 Clover Leaf Exchanges and have wide, double-laned roads leading to and from. We all know Route 206 is a complete disaster. This project adversely hurts the Royce Brook watershed, sending hundreds of thousands of gallons of runoff to my town during more intense rainfall events. So I ask, why this location? That is something only the applicant can answer. But it's clear to me they have no common sense in selecting this location. Board members, please use your common sense and deny this application for so many reasons previously stated. It is a serious quality-of-life issue that harms our environment and surrounding homeowners in the area. Please deny this application unanimously. Thank you, board members.
I live on the whole other end of town, but I'm here, and I've been here a lot. And I'm not really, I don't have a prepared statement and everything else, I'm just kind of speaking off the cuff. Why did we build the bypass? It was to alleviate traffic in our downtown area. This warehouse, just like we were saying here, is not in the right place. I'm not against warehouses. Warehouses are necessary, but not in this location, not in a neighborhood, not with roadways that have no access to highways. The bypass has been in proposal for many, many, many years. Let's face it, for anyone who knows the interstates, there was supposed to be an interstate coming down the route of 206, joining 287 to 295. That never happened. 206 was here. The bypass had been proposed for many years. It was supposed to have a different pathway, but over the course of time, that's changed. And we know Pike Run was built, there are a lot of reasons for it, I understand that. But here we are with the bypass. The state designed the bypass. They put in access ramps on the bypass in various locations. Did they put an access ramp on Homestead Road? No, because there was no foresight that that would be an area that would be accessible for warehousing or traffic volume and trucks that's proposed with this proposal. There's no reason why we should be diverting all this truck traffic into our downtown area. The bypass is wasted money, wasted effort, if we allow all these trucks to go through our downtown area. I don't think I've heard anything from the people who are proposing this about talking about access to the bypass. They could have proposed to the state, "Hey, let's build an access point at Homestead Road in the bypass." There was none of that. There was no access road to access, what's the next road down that has the interchange? Hillsborough Road. There was no proposal for an access point from the warehouse to hit that so they could hit the bypass. None of that. All of this traffic is going to go into our downtown area. Every reason that these other people have spoken about, I agree with. But my thing, just to talk about, is why did we build the bypass if we're going to put all this traffic on our town? Thank you.
I don't know these people. As you know, I've been here the whole time since the first hearing and have, as most of you, members of the audience tonight, who have also been here. I've watched, excuse me, I've watched, I've listened, and I've questioned the applicant's witnesses in an attempt to understand how these two giant warehouse monoliths could possibly conform to the requirements of the T E C D zone. I've not been convinced, and I think the planning board should not be either. But first, I want to thank Chairman Sarachi, the board members, Township Planner David Coys, our Township Engineer, Mr. Mayhew, and Township Attorney, Mr. Bernstein, for your patience, for your insightfulness, and your willingness to listen to not just the applicant, but also the five formal objectors and the public as we search for the answers to the ultimate question. Nobody knew that the ultimate question was going to be presented in Hillsborough. I know that all of you realize we're not here for the entertainment, but it has been good. As much as the simple fact that we care about the future of the township and are willing to work collaboratively to protect it, and I think you've heard that from everyone who's spoken, the common denominator for everybody who has spoken so far has simply been that we care about this town, and we want to make the best decisions so that everybody can be benefited and also everybody can be protected. Second, as strange as it sounds, I want to thank the applicant for proposing these two outlandish, giant monstrosities, and Mr. Giannetti for his condescending, disrespectful, and intimidating behavior. This proposal, in the uncompromising manner, he's making notes. This proposal, in the uncompromising manner in which it has been pursued, has only acted to crystallize broad-based and fact-based community opposition, and that has been incredibly This arrogant approach and behavior towards us has become a unifying force across Hillsborough, bringing both Democrats and Republicans together, and independents, who have all worked tirelessly through these last twenty-three public hearings to object and to fight this ill-conceived Third, I want to thank the growing list of all of my friends and neighbors who have generously provided their time and creative energy to participate, persevere, and push for what is best for Hillsborough. I also want to thank the five formal objectors, who have tirelessly rallied their resources to present their critical probing questions of the applicant's experts and providing their own experts, whose testimony has overwhelmingly demonstrated that the applicant's engineering, traffic, planning, and others' testimony cannot be trusted to provide honest information. These objectors have played a unique and an instrumental role in the search for the truth, and each has played a critical role in aiding the planning board, aiding all of you, to now be able to make a fully informed decision as to this application. So what's the idea of an acceptable proposal for this transitional economic development district zone? You've heard a number of people talk about it. I kind of describe it a little bit differently. I think of it visually like steps in my house. You have my house nearby with my neighbors as the bottom step. The next step is the intermediate one, that's part of the T E C D, and the final top step is the higher intensity use on Stryker Lane. Appropriately, I'm sorry, appropriate use in T E C D is bigger than the intense use on Stryker Lane and the commercial spaces, and thus named transitional. As defined in Part A of Section 188-107.2 of the Code and the legislative history from Page 12 of the Planning Board Minutes from December 9, 2010, quote, "It's meant to indicate a transition of intensity between residential and industrial." Here's the problem: if you place the applicant's proposal on the second step, instead of it being transitional, I think it's like placing the Empire State Building on that second step. It just doesn't fit the zone. It's way out of proportion. It's simply nonconforming in every way: too big, too intense, too much truck traffic, too many cars, too much noise, too much air, light, and stormwater pollution, too nonconformingly disruptive as to its disrespect for the lay of the land and our neighborhoods, literally on the property line that we live on next to it, and too visually out of place considering size and scope by packing nine football fields of buildings. So you've heard the testimony of many other members of the public who have spoken on unanswered and unresolved issues with this applicant's different topics. So in addition to the basic common sense conclusions that this proposal was too intense for this zoning location, I'll briefly mention two other issues with the application in the T E C D zone. First, as I mentioned, size and scale. The applicant is proposing to build the Empire State Building, and it does not fit the requirements of the Zone 188-107.2B. All uses shall be provided at a scale and size that is appropriate for the district. That's not happening. Second, the applicant has ignored the other requirement in T E C D that, quote, "Buildings and site improvements shall be designed to minimize changes to existing topography and mature vegetation. Cutting down hundreds of trees, creating a thousand-foot-by-three-hundred-and-fifty-foot tabletop monolith, and a second one, that's three hundred by four hundred and fifty feet, and the need for almost three-quarters of a mile of retaining walls up to twenty-one feet tall fails to conform to the requirement, to say the least." And that's in 188-107.2F1A1. I know you all know that. So we need a good neighbor and an applicant that wants to work with the township to develop a use that is complementary to the community. The applicant has offered nothing to the community and has not been willing to compromise on anything. In addition, the applicant has failed to be fully candid with the planning board and the public, failing to follow the requirements, as was mentioned before, about concerns on the railroad, failing to even seek a waiver under the pipeline buffer ordinances, 188-175... the railroad, failing to even seek a waiver under the pipeline buffer ordinances, 188-175, is not acceptable. And who knows how many other things that the applicant has been playing cat and mouse with the township on? Let's also not forget about whether the applicant is Homestead Road LLC or Enhance Acquisitions LLC, and this is also a nonconforming subdivision as other individuals have mentioned. I'm only going to say that a scorched earth approach, or will fix it later on by the applicant, does not make a conforming application. I may also state that the applicant doesn't tell us what it wants. It has to conform to the application and the required criteria. I believe the application and the applicant has failed to do so. One last thought. You may recall at the very first hearing, I brought a sign that read, "Say no to Amazon." And it asked the question as to who was proposing to build these giant warehouses. The applicant was quick to state, this was not going to be an Amazon warehouse. And I asked the board now, after 23 public hearings and roughly 70 hours of testimony, do we know more than, I'm sorry, do we know more with any testimony clarity that this applicant is not building an Amazon warehouse? The answer is a definitive no, since after all this testimony, the applicant has only told us these warehouses are being built on speculation. So it could be an Amazon warehouse, especially since the applicant has not been candid or even honest as to who is actually the developer or if it even has the right to subdivide the property. My understanding under Section 188-31E is that speculation uses, including warehouses, are not allowed. In many respects, we know less today than we did when the application was begun. I also want to reiterate, which I'm sure other people have said, under the municipal land use law, it is that the applicant has the responsibility to set before all of you members of the board the evidence necessary for you to decide whether this application is approved, meaning the applicant has the burden of proof to convince the planning board to act favorably towards it. Based upon all the testimony presented and the cross-examination of the applicant's experts and the objectors, I will say credible, expert contradictory testimony, and Mr. Coys' and Mr. Mayhew's detailed final reports, I believe the applicant has failed to meet the burden of proof, and I therefore ask the planning board to vote to deny this application. I thought about how I could summarize and focus on all that has transpired throughout these three years of hearings. It's not easy. I decided to sum it up a little bit differently, and so I've drafted a closing poem for your consideration, since I'm thinking and hoping that maybe, just maybe, this summary brings a sense of poetic justice to these proceedings, as well as a candid acknowledgement of what has transpired. The poem is titled, "Homestead Road LLC and the Infamous T E C D." This is the land of the Transitional Economic Development District. The applicant has made it sound like its proposal is as simple as Bisquick. Their plan is to build two giant warehouses on old Homestead Road, but the location is totally unsuitable, and we all know it can't handle the load. The Homestead Road topography is really hilly, so building the equivalent of nine flat football fields is pretty darn silly. The problem is giant warehouses don't fit in this T E C D zone. However, Mr. Gianetti says it will be better than a tasty ice cream cone. He has brought his experts, who say no impact, and the birds will fly in the skies, and trust us, since we really know how to pull the wool over your eyes. The fact of the matter is, their experts are just hired guns who have developed-
Objection, Chairman. This is achieving nothing, other than insulting the applicant and trying to call us liars the whole time. This is achieving nothing. This is public comment to present testimony on the application from the public or comments with respect to it, not some theater to just insult the applicant the entire time.
It's a story, and I believe I have the right to finish my poem.
No, you don't.
Didn't think we'd have a debate over poems, but I will continue. The fact of the matter is, their experts are just hired guns who have developed a lengthy reputation of speaking in forked tongues. Their experts don't care about the harm it will cause as they speak in their high-priced suits, since they get paid to shine the rotten apple while trying to convince the planning board that it all computes. Never mind the facts, since they say it will all be great. They want us to think we have no other fate. Well, that's not true, and the residents in this town are up in arms, since they know the land would still be better if left as farms. We residents hope the planning board will recognize the absurdity of it all, and after the objectors and the public have spoken, we hope the board will heed the call. We are told you can't stop development, but if it doesn't fit, then as the saying goes, it should not ship, or in this case, be approved. By now, it should also be obvious that the applicant has failed to meet its burden of proof, so we think that means that the planning board should not be spoofed or make a goof. The plain English translation is, it's time for the planning board to vote to deny the Homestead Road LLC application mess. This warehouse fiasco can finally be denied, and everyone in Hillsborough will feel blessed. Thank you for the privilege of providing this semi-poetic ditty. I'm only hoping it will get us thinking on the best way to help protect our city. Respectfully submitted, and I do mean that, and I want to thank you all for listening and, most importantly, voting to deny this application. Thank you. David Brooke.[1016.13][1016.13](APPLAUSE).
I know, we're coming up against the witching hour, so.
I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that Ms. Hosby be the last witness or last public member for this evening. I do have a rather lengthy discussion with the board, who I think would like to go home before the midnight hour. So the board's current time of decision is the end of July. We have a July meeting at the end of July? Fourth meeting? Or this? I believe there's a business meeting scheduled. I know the chairman hates this proposition, but there are no meetings in August, so I think we need to get at least another meeting in before the TOD so we can deal with what comes from that thereafter. And the July 10th meeting is currently scheduled for the Harvard remand.
Okay, Mr. Bernstein was not expecting you to ask about July. We currently have some other applications that we're looking to put on there.
The alternative is to take a piece of the July 10th meeting, but not a lot of it because you've got the remand, and at some point you're going to have to, though it is pretty much the same cast for Harvard that it is for this application. So that's the alternative, Mr. Chairman, is to start the meeting on the 10th.
Are we looking to get before time decision just to complete public and closing arguments?
I think maybe to close the public, then we'll see.
I'd rather power through, though.
What?
I'd rather power through, because I don't think we're going to get a July meeting in. Yeah, I'd like to get a, see who from the public still would want to comment on this application. Okay, so we, yeah, I was going to say.
You recall, Mr. Chairman?
I'd rather power through to get the public done. We're going to do the three that raised their hands, and that'll be it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would like you to just get up and be in line so we can get through. All right.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, Judy Hos, Titus Court, Hillsborough, not associated with anybody. Four score minus 77 years ago, this application was brought to the planning board, and the then-planner David Maske demonstrated incredible vision by saying, quote, "So, good evening, everybody. First of all, it's highly unlikely that this will be decided tonight. If you don't get your chance tonight, there'll definitely be two or three additional hearings, and we'll see how that goes." That was May 12, 2022. Well, he was right. Two, three, 10, 20, and tonight, the 24th meeting on this abomination, which never should have been accepted for hearing. Continuing that evening, there have been some fundamental problems that have really bothered me. The then-attorney at the time described the property as being boarded on the north and south by agricultural properties, on the west by Route 206 and the railroad, TSX Railroad. I think that was a misrepresentation. Property on the north and east is clearly residential, and that wasn't mentioned. You've seen all the people at these hearings. West is the 206 bypass, not 206, and it seemed to me in retrospect that the whole issue of this being a residential area was ignored. Then they talked about the lots. Lot 32, which was 68 acres, vacant, formerly housed a hog farm. It also housed some school buses, we found out, but I'll move on from that. Approximately half of that was supposedly a Q farm, which stands for qualified farm or maybe questionable farm, and paying under $100 a year in taxes on 30-plus acres. Lot 33 is 20 acres and contains various agricultural and commercial buildings. That was a little bit of an under-representation, since it also contains a hazardous waste site, as defined by Hillsborough's Natural Resources Guide, and a house and a business. We learned in the sales contract that it also may or may not include a cemetery or some easements to a cemetery or other rights, according to that contract, and nobody has said one word about that until right now. Hopefully, somebody will address that before cement or asphalt is poured over a cemetery. Then we were told that for purposes of the subdivision, the applicant's proposing to move the existing lot line separating lots 32 and 33, resulting in a lot of 39 acres and another lot of, I'm condensing this, up to 49.10 acres. So the plan was to add property to a hazardous waste site with a business, a house, and a cemetery already on it. So I don't understand how people are able to subdivide properties that are owned by different people without merging them first under a new ownership, which was never done, but throughout this application, the plans, the reports, and everything else moved forward with a property line in the middle of a proposed monster warehouse, and the proposals should have been bifurcated and presented on their own merits in two applications. There was no merger, no subdivision, no bifurcation, and frankly, the two separate applications, because they were never intended to be unified. That's why you don't see the pedestrian connections within the property. So I find that whole thing exceptionally presumptuous. And then, two other little minor issues. You shouldn't sign a planning board application as Homestead Road LLC of Boca Raton, Florida, when in fact the contract purchaser of one of the properties was Enhance Acquisitions of New York City. You shouldn't have your attorney state that they are both single-member entities when your own website and various sources of information mention other names as a co-founder and managing partner and another director of acquisitions. Do we want to talk about Evan Dolgan and Benji Shanzard here? I guess not. And then, of course, it was a matter of having the so-called one-owner of Enhance assign the contract to the so-called one-owner of Homestead Road LLC of Boca Raton, who of course was the same person. Wow, how do you do that? Then we learned there was a prior contract purchaser for one of the properties who was suing the owner for bailing on their agreement, and I think, which I think was for housing, which really would have been outrageous on a hazardous waste site, and nobody on the planning board knows anything about the larger of the two pieces of this property, because we've never seen the owner, we've never seen the contract, which should be available, especially because of this ownership confusion. Then we learned that the proposal was not to build one, but two massive warehouses in a zone where size and scale matters. Massive is the nicest word I can use. At the risk of having their new attorney attack me like he attacked Brian and Ena for doing their best to provide a visual representation, which the developer should have done, I'll make this real easy. Building one alone is humongous, gigantic, Titanic. Actually, it's more than Titanic, because the boat by that name, if anybody wants to cue the music, was only 882 feet long and 92 feet wide. So technically, this building is 1,025 by 360. You could park three Titanic's in the square footage of this one building on this property. The length alone is the height of the Chrysler Building in New York and the Eiffel Tower in Paris. If you know any of those buildings, they are large. As lovely as they are, does that fit in Hillsborough? I don't think so. Then we heard about the fiscal surplus of 164,000 or 171,000, if you take Art Bernard's report or Chris Crofman's report, for the township, 950,000 to 915 for the schools. Actually, they have slightly different numbers, but I'd say 164,000 or 171,000 will not pay for any street in our town to be reconstructed or repaved from all of the truck traffic that this project will clearly create, nor for the police coverage that will be necessary, nor for the emergency services and public works assistance for the property damage from flooding that this will cause. And $950,000 will not benefit the schools at all, other than lowering the tax rate, because it's meaningless when you have a capped budget and reassessment raises taxes around here for residents, no matter how much new development goes on. The whole methodology of this report is ridiculous, and it's based on a cost per employee, which not for the cost of infrastructure impacts and damage and repair. None of the developers ever went up to the microphone to present and be questioned about their project. I saw many developers do that when I worked in New York. They provided beautiful, detailed models and brochures, and they had a lot of pride in the reasons why their projects would benefit the city. They had lawyers, too, but they didn't speak for them. If you can only speak to a false amount of surplus money that the township will not truly reap, I have a problem with you. This does not do anything positive for Hillsborough. There are no public amenities included, no redeeming qualities, and no mitigation effort on any of the huge impacts. So what was proposed in a transitional zone, transitional between residential farm and open space to a light industrial area with 330 square feet of space, 330,000 square feet of space in 33 small buildings? We got nine football fields of warehouse space, 90 docks, 137 parking spaces for trailers, 281 other parking spaces, and a 24/7/365 operation. Thank you very much. I know you're going into deliberations. Please vote no for the following reasons, among others. One, application incomplete as to tenant and potential problems with noise and pollution. That speculative development contrary to 188-31E1. Size and scale, number two, size and scale absurd by all definitions. Three, master plan goal for the T E C D for design, quote, "Design that assures peace and solitude of residents." and solitude of residents." Four, list of possible tenant types labeled low hazard and moderate hazard, but not limited to, not very reassuring, and an evolving number of employees and shifts pulled out of, let's say, the wind, based on nothing. Next, a plan with maximum square footage, only stopped in one case by a gas pipeline, and in the other case, by an active railroad track. Next, lack of coordination with the railroad company and the pipeline company for preapprovals. Next, stormwater issues in an area that regularly floods. Next, violation of stream crossing in a gas pipeline for roads. Next, no water main beyond the Nichols property, which used to be the Board of Ed building. Installation will impact current pavement of much of Homestead Road. Water connections will also have to cross the pipeline and stream. Next, no formal planning report, only a few memos saying everybody else is wrong because Cofone said so. Next, no noise report or evaluation. Next, no pollution report or evaluation. Next, an operations guy who said he was not an operations guy. Next, no connection to the bypass and no connector road. Next, no consideration of off-site road improvements or road widening from Willow to 206. Next, trailer parking contrary to code. Next, dangerous intersection over the railroad bridge. Next, no pedestrian or bicycle access, no pedestrian or bicycle circulation connection, demonstrated once again that this should have been two separate applications. Next, no consideration for the trees and wildlife that'll be destroyed by this intense plan. Next, rear of the building loading docks facing the homes. Great idea. Nine football fields of warehouse space, 90 docks, 137 trailer parking spaces, 281 other parking spaces, and a 24/7 operation. This is a hateful application. It is oversized, it is overparked, it is overloaded. Please do not listen to pay-to-say consultants. Please listen to your truly dedicated staff. David Coise is a wonderful township planner. Mark Mayhew is a wonderful township engineer, thoughtful, thorough, careful, and caring about the community. Our residents have all spoken, and I really thank all of them, as well as representatives from Manville and Montgomery, who came here in recognition of the regional aspects of this proposal. We don't deserve this. Hillsborough doesn't deserve this. It doesn't belong here. Please protect our health and safety and deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Maria Janusik, I'm a Manville Borough resident and a Hillsborough property owner. So much valuable information has been provided by each of the prior speakers from the public. This information demonstrates the very serious negative issues associated with this application that is speculative and technically still incomplete. I am joining my name and my voice with all of them. I am requesting that you, planning board members, pay strict attention to what was presented and vote to deny this application.
My name is Debbie Petrock. We live at 1246 Millstone River Road in Hillsborough here, and I didn't hear much about the traffic issue that is potentially going to happen on Millstone River Road. Already, it's very bad. We have heavy dump trucks that travel down that road at 50 to 60 miles an hour between Amwell Road and Manville, and it's a hazard, and we've been working with traffic safety to try and curb that, but, you know, it comes and goes. They can kind of get a handle on it once in a while, but it's very dangerous. These big dump trucks already go there very fast. I've already had an accident pulling into my driveway. Thank God, not by a tractor-trailer. If this warehouse goes through, I hear that that will be an access route out to 287, and I just hope that you take that into consideration. It's already a very busy, dangerous road. It's all residential. There's driveways leading out to Millstone River Road. There's developments that lead out there. There's no commercial, anything. It's all residential, and I really do feel that if this is approved, that traffic can't, those tractor-trailers cannot go down Millstone River Road. It's too much of a hazard. So, anyway, I just hope that you deny the application, because I don't think it's good for the town, and I love Hillsborough. Nick and I have lived here most of our lives, and, you know, we own a business here in town, and we love it, and we love all the residents, so thank you.
Yep. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Bernstein, next.
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated previously, I do have an extended period of time to talk to the board about items totally and completely unrelated to this application in terms of the pending decision. As I indicated, the time of decision at the moment is July 31st. I would suggest the reconvening for a portion, and only a small portion, of the July 10th meeting, based on Mr. Coise's comments, for the objectors, and depending on where we are, the applicant's closing statements, and then we'll have to reassess where we are in terms of the board's deliberation issues.
That's fine. I guess we're just clarification. Will each objector be giving a summation?
I think they have the right to.
I'm just asking.
So the answer is, I don't know if they will, and I don't think they necessarily have to commit this evening. I suspect some will and some won't, but that's up to them, Mr. Chairman, and I would indicate to the board that because of the nature of the other matter that is before the board, I don't think this is going to be more than an hour, hour and a half tops, and then you're going to have to go into discussion, along with your other attorney, who will be here as well as me, your carrier's attorney relative to that application. So if the board is so inclined, I would suggest that a motion to continue this hearing to Thursday, July 10th at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, not to exceed 90 minutes on that evening, and we'll see where we are.
Is everybody available to be here on that meeting? I guess it'll be the next question.
Well, I would hope, because most of those people who are here for tonight will have to be here for Harvard Way.
Yes.
There's going to be at least the core five.
Yes.
The fab five.
Yes, it's good to be that group.
Actually, yeah, it is five, so...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Spahn?
Yes.
Chair Peasont?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would ask for a meeting to go, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B7 and B8, attorney-client privilege related to pending or anticipated litigation regarding Weston Road LLC and affordable housing to be moved over to the conference room. We will come back to, we'll probably adjourn from there, and no formal action is going to be requested this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to do roll call? Yeah, because it's a resolution.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session.